We have with us today Bill Webb, our health officer here in Kent County in the Health Department, and Wayne Darrell, the Director for Emergency Services. And they're going to give us a local state of emergency update. The floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to address you and to the community. I want to take this chance to first thank the community for their ongoing cooperation with the stay-at-home order and all of the unprecedented actions that have been mandated to mitigate the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. You know, so far, the Health Department has received outstanding support and cooperation from community members. Whenever I ask for something, I have not encountered a single organization that has said, "No, we can't do that." You know, usually, it's the answer I get is, "We can do this, and we can also do something else for you as well." So, you know, the community response, again, has been outstanding. I also want to take this opportunity to praise all of my team members who were part of the Emergency Operations Center, Mr. Darrell, and all of the other representatives who work on a daily basis to ensure the safety and functioning of our community. It's been 55 days since the declaration of a state of emergency by the Governor. At this point, this is one of the longest emergency operation activations that I can remember in my career. It is truly unprecedented. The good news is today that we have, the state now has a roadmap to recovery. It's a three-stage process that has been outlined by the Governor. The bad news is that we're in the middle of the surge that we had anticipated six weeks ago. You know, the number of cases is still going up, and we're not sure how long it's gonna, how far it's gonna go up, or how long it's gonna last. Today, I want to talk about Kent County's current numbers, our current outbreaks, the four pillars of recovery, and offer some predictions about how long it will last and potentially when things will open back up again. So, on to the numbers. And these numbers are as of yesterday, Monday, the 26th. Our case count is, our case count of positives are 77. The number of deaths we have had are seven. The number who have recovered or have been released from isolation are six. The number, total number of Kent County residents who've been tested at the regional Chesapeake College testing site is 103 out of a total of 533 mid-shore residents who've been tested. The Kent County Health Department hotline has logged 584 calls. The number of total essential businesses that we have consulted related to safe operations at this point are 50. One of the things that changed as of yesterday, the Governor, the Governor announced that he wanted to disclose specific information related to nursing homes and nursing home outbreaks. The nursing homes have a lot of vulnerable people. There are a lot of high-risk, high-risk citizens, and they have been disproportionately affected by the COVID-19 virus. So, at this time, I would like to just, you know, give you some information about the outbreaks that we have had in Kent County. Approximately 80% of all of our cases are attributable to these four specific outbreaks. You know, most of them involve nursing homes. But before, before, you know, we paint these nursing homes in a negative light, understand that currently, as of today, there are 137 specific outbreaks across the state in nursing homes, in nursing homes in Maryland. And I'm not sure of the exact number of nursing homes that exist, but I think it's somewhere around 220 or 230. So, at this point, there are more nursing homes that have outbreaks than don't. Specifically, in Kent County, we've had outbreaks at Autumn Lake, at the resorts at Chester River, at Heron Point, and also one in agricultural production and processing facility that are on record with the Health Department and the Maryland Department of Health. So, let me go ahead and give some information about those specific outbreaks. At Autumn Lake, the outbreak started on April 14th. At this point, we have 51 residents who've tested positive, 10 employees who have also tested positive. There have been four deaths and six pending test results as of, as of yesterday. And that is, you know, that is, is a very high number. The resorts at Chester, Chester River, the outbreak there started on the 25th of April. At this point, we have two residents who've tested positive, no employees. We've had one death, and we're awaiting 90 pending tests for the other residents in that facility. At Heron Point, we had an outbreak that started on March 29th. It involved two residents and one employee, and at this point, we're waiting on one pending test result. The agricultural processing and production outbreak, that started on April 22nd. It started in one facility. There were five employees who tested positive. One, we have one pending test result. Our experience with that particular facility, we have found that contact tracing with, with those individuals are very difficult. There's a language barrier and a cultural, and a cultural barrier that we're, that we're working to overcome. In all likelihood, that, you know, that instance may be linked, when we get more information, to the larger outbreaks that have happened elsewhere in the poultry processing business, especially in the counties south, south of us. At this point, at this point, there are hundreds of cases, you know, related to the poultry processing business. This, this particular outbreak in the poultry business has received the highest priority from the state, from federal resources, and from local health departments. You know, there is currently a task force that is in place at the State Emergency Operations Center specifically focused on this, this, this industry and this outbreak. The CDC has dispatched a technical advisory team, and they will be, you know, meeting on a regular basis to formulate testing and mitigation strategies across all three states. So, that's going to be Delaware, Maryland, and Virginia. As it relates to all of these outbreaks, I want to take, take the opportunity, you know, to, to praise the leadership in each one of the organizations. Everybody that we have, have worked with to, to deal with the outbreaks has been, has been very responsive to the Health Department. We have not had, we have not had, you know, any of the, the sort of the negative stories that come out of, you know, some other facilities that have completely sort of had really, really bad outcomes. At this point, you know, our, you know, especially in our nursing homes, the leadership is engaged. They're, you know, they're proactive. They are working courageously in a very difficult situation with people that can't see their families, can't visit with their families. And if anything, I would ask the community to step up and recognize these people. As, the other thing I want to recognize related to the outbreak is the involvement of the University of Maryland Shore Regional Health. They have been our vital partners for, for each one of these situations. They have been instrumental in getting us test kits. They have been instrumental in providing, you know, detailed technical expertise related to infectious disease. We have had, you know, interactions with, with both the infectious disease, you know, Division of Shore Regional Health, and also their palliative care specialists, which are very important with, with nursing homes because one of the things, when these folks get sick, you know, you have to make the very difficult decision, you know, do we take aggressive treatment action, or do we provide comfort care? It has been, it has been a very difficult time for these healthcare facilities. Okay. Enough about the outbreaks. I want to talk about the four pillars of recovery. They are, you know, having an ample PPE supply, having a robust testing infrastructure, having hospital surge capacity.
Is now joining.
And also, a, a robust contact tracing infrastructure. So, you know, to go back to the PPE situation, you know, Kent County agencies, we're, we're still facing a critical shortage of masks, gowns, face shields, and hand sanitizer. You know, we were working with MIMA and the Strategic National Stockpile, and also commercial operations to bring, to bring in ample supplies. The supply chain is still exceptionally tight, and all of our healthcare agencies and first responders are using PPE conservation strategies that really wouldn't, in normal times, would not at all be recommended. You know, Kent County, you know, the Health Department, we have received approximately four pallets of supplies. We're expecting another substantial delivery today, and we're diligently working to push those out to our healthcare providers and other high-priority businesses that, that need it. Okay, so on to testing. At this point, the Governor made a very public announcement about procuring 500,000 test kits that have been delivered to Maryland. There have been some, some delays getting those out to the counties because there are some parts of the test kits that are missing. For instance, you know, the, the test kits didn't come with swabs. So, the county has had to find and procure swabs for those test kits. At this point, I have been reassured that, that the testing landscape across the state will change drastically in the next two weeks. I'm hopeful that that will mean that the Health Department can set up in-person testing in the county for folks who need it and who may have been exposed. I'm still waiting for details related to that. One of the things that, that, you know, from a current perspective, our county has not received, you know, an ample supply of test kits. At this point, we have been very grateful to work with the five other counties, and through the regional testing site, we were able to, you know, we've only gotten about, you know, 80 test kits from labs and from the Maryland Department of Health, Public Health Lab, and we've had well over 100 people tested at Chesapeake College. So, that has been, that has been a big benefit for our residents. I do want to also mention that Shore Regional Health has been instrumental in delivering test kits for our healthcare agencies that are in crisis and those where outbreaks are happening. We're hopeful that rapid testing technology will, will soon supplant all of the existing testing technologies because right now, even in the best situation, turnaround time for testing is 24 hours. And, you know, what we need is to be able to have a test result within, you know, 15 to 20 minutes. And I think that that's the direction the industry is going in, and at some point, we will reach, we will reach that goal. Okay, I want to talk about the third pillar, which is our hospital surge capabilities. On Thursday, March 20, on Thursday, March 23rd, Shore Regional Health presented its surge plan to all five health officers and emergency managers in the five mid-shore counties. It was thorough, it was detailed, and it was refreshingly candid. At this point, I'm reassured that this plan will meet most of the situations that may arise. Currently, the thinking is that their plan at Shore Regional Health is to meet all surge needs by, by, by accommodating beds within the facilities that they currently have, so that they're not looking to set up alternate care sites. And an alternate care site had been discussed for Chesapeake College for convalescent care. At this point, Shore Regional Health, it feels that given the models that they have seen and the anticipated volume, that they will be able to accommodate the needs within their own buildings. Now, understand that they're talking about taking over conference rooms, offices, any available space in the facilities that they have, and that's especially true in Chestertown, to put beds and have care providers in the building. So, on to the numbers. So, at this point, they reassure, you know, Shore Regional Health assured us that if, in the event of a severe surge, that they would be able to surge to a total of 69 beds and 297 regionally in the five locations. That would be attributed 31 med-surg beds and eight ICU beds. And, and that would also include 30 convalescent care beds. One of the things that they also presented was a drastically revised staffing schedule with four different teams. They are making major changes in the way, the way the hospital operates to accommodate this particular surge situation. But for, you know, the, the citizens of Kent County, the, having the hospital and having it open has been absolutely vital to the health of this community. And, you know, I'm grateful for the participation at this point of what Shore has done, especially with the, the planning and, you know, the participation in the EOC. Okay, on to the fourth pillar, contact tracing. At this point, the Kent County Health Department has tripled its contact tracing staff. For anyone who is not familiar with what contact tracing is, anytime someone tests positive, the Health Department receives a notification from the lab that the individual has tested positive. The contact tracer reaches out to that individual to get them into voluntary isolation first and foremost. As soon as we know somebody's positive, we try to get them into, into isolation as fast as possible. We then spend some time talking about anybody that they've had close personal contact with in the 48 hours preceding when the symptoms, when they had symptom onset, or any of the other guidance that's needed for people who've been newly diagnosed. And there, there are a number, there are always lots of questions that are related to this. Contact tracing is, is time-intensive, but it's a vital F- part of mitigating the spread. From, from a statewide perspective, the Maryland Department of Health has plans to hire 700 employees in a central call center to assist with contact tracing. Additionally, the state has developed a statewide software tool to help track all of the contacts that come out of those efforts. So, we want not just the person who's tested positive, but the people that they have been exposed to in close personal contact so that we can get them potentially quarantined or tested if needed. So, you know, at this point, how the division of labor between local Health Department staff and the statewide call center has not been detailed. So, now, on to some predictions. You know, at this point, I don't have a crystal ball. And one of the, one of the difficulties that I have as health officer is the state of Maryland, you know, uses four different models to make predictions, and they're not really sharing it with the local health officers. You know, and, and that's okay because it changes, it changes on almost a daily basis. And, and, you know, our local Health Department, you know, you have to have a lot of technical expertise to help understand some of the models and the variables that they're using to make predictions about this. I would say, from a layman's perspective, so, how are we going to know when things are going to open up? When are we going to go into the various stages of recovery? The most important statistics to watch are going to be the number of new hospitalizations and the number of new cases. That's on the state webpage. Look at those two numbers. One of the things that, that other states have done is when there are seven days of decreasing numbers of hospital, new hospitalizations related to COVID-19, that is an indicator that we have hit the peak and that we are, we are on the downward slope. Unfortunately, nobody has a crystal ball in whether or not there will be one peak, multiple peaks, or this will extend for many, many months. Okay, at this point, when, you know, from what I understand, what has been communicated to me about the models, the surge has been estimated to occur between mid-May and early June. And there is a likelihood that we could have multiple surges. So, we would have to be prepared for that. One of the things that, that, you know, I like to look at, you know, from a global perspective, is that sort of the United States is about a month behind the situation in Italy, and that, that, you know, they're, they're just beginning at this point in Italy to look at, at opening up, slowly opening up their economy and their society after the outbreak. Kent County itself seems to be, you know, if you look at sort of the first case in the state of Maryland versus the first case in Kent County, we were about, you know, two weeks behind the central part of the state. As we look at the various stages to, in the roadmap to recovery, one of the things, there are three stages. You know, I would, I would, you know, advise everybody who's looking at sort of the timing of that, that each stage is going to, is going to last at least 14 to 21 days. Because one of the things the Governor wants to make sure is when there has been a loosening of, a loosening of, of the rules and everybody's headed back to sort of normal operations, that the, the disease window is, you know, takes about 14 days to even begin to get a handle on if there have been a spike in new cases. So, so the 14 to 21 days is the very minimum that, that I would anticipate, you know, sort of each stage lasting. I would say that, you know, moving forward for the foreseeable future, you know, where there are going to be sort of long-lasting cultural impacts from this outbreak. You know, masks, social distancing, hand washing will be with us for the foreseeable future until we're able to get, you know, a vaccination program in place. And at this point, that's, you know, all, all of us in the healthcare industry are, you know, you know, rooting very hard to have a vaccination because, you know, once we get that in place, that is going to provide the herd immunity that we need to help, you know, you know, return to, to a normal situation. This has been, you know, a very difficult, you know, five, six weeks at this point. You know, I think that I have just presented an enormous amount of information very quickly, and so if you have questions, go ahead.
I assume that the, that the employees at some of these nursing facilities that have been tested positive, they send them home and put them in isolation?
Yes.
I imagine they're struggling then. Somebody's got to take care of those patients.
Correct. And, and when I talk about, you know, you know, the heroic measures that our nursing homes have, have taken, you know, they have brought in agency nurses, they have brought people from out of state to come in, and they've brought people from sister facilities. You know, clearly, you know, as an employer, you know, your most, one of your most important resources is your human resources. And, and when somebody, you know, is symptomatic and tests positive, you know, we, you know, they need to, you know, stay home for at least seven days. And then, if, if they're not symptomatic after seven days, they need to have a 72-hour window of, of no symptoms and no fever without taking medication.
I think that's kind of what I wanted you to say, is that people listening might think, "Well, who's taking care of my grandmother?" Or some, but they do have, they, they are bringing, they do have staff that's continuing to work through those hazardous conditions.
Yes.
And I agree with you. They are heroes.
I have a question. I read this somewhere, and sometimes you read a lot of stuff that is not right. But it had, where Kent County, the cases, we had the highest per capita cases and the highest per capita deaths on the eastern shore. I say the eastern shore. I don't know if it's eastern shore or, or the whole state. Is that an accurate?
I, I, I have, I have not seen, you know, data presented in a case rate that came, that's come out of the, that has come out of the Maryland Department of Health. You know, certainly with the population that we have and the number of cases that we have, you know, you know, doing, you know, sort of doing indirect mass certainly would suggest that. The dilemma that I have there is, is that I'm not an epidemiologist, and I don't have an epidemiologist on, on staff to be able to say, "Okay, is this true or not?" And, you know, because we can look at the number of cases, and we can look at sort of the population for each jurisdiction. But is that how you accurately calculate the, you know, the, the case rate? You know, and, you know, being that I'm not an expert in that, you know, I would have to defer to the state of Maryland, the Maryland Department of Health to get that. And I have not formally seen those numbers. I think that, that that number came from sort of informal calculation. And, you know, if I do get anything like that, I certainly will, would, you know, would, you know, push that out to the community.
As far as the hospital goes, you, you said that there was a possibility that there would be 69 available beds in case we have this, maybe this outbreak that they talk about coming back in the fall or some. Is, has some of that work been done to transform some of those open spaces into, into bed rooms that can be used? Has some of the work been done? Or is, are we going to be working on that as we go along?
My understanding is that in, in Chestertown, the Chestertown facility, that, that it would not, that, that a lot of, you know, most of the space is currently vacant. And it would not, you know, not take the same amount of effort that it would in Easton. Because I know in Easton, they've talked about converting the education center, the conference rooms, offices that used to be ICU rooms. My understanding is that some of that has, some of that has happened. They may not have the equipment yet in place, but they certainly have a plan. And, and, you know, and I haven't, I haven't been into the hospital, so.
They're working in that direction.
Yeah.
But that's a big jump for Chestertown. When we were here, we were talking earlier. We had like 15 or 16, 18 beds or something on the second floor. I'm talking about opening up another 12 or 14 or, and then to, now to hear that we, we could possibly have as many as 69 if, if, if need be. Hopefully, they won't be needed, but that's quite, that's quite a jump. And I guess a lot of those were already had their beds and stuff that they were, they just weren't being used on.
Well, 30 of the beds are considered, you know, that they have projected is, are what's called convalescent beds. And those, the, the care that happens there is, is, is much lower than it would be in a regular hospital. And those are going to be the type of beds that go into conference rooms, into, into whole offices. That's, you know, and that doesn't take a lot of effort to set up because you don't need to have an oxygen supply, and you don't need to have an EKG hookup, and you don't need to have IV pumps, you know, and electricity for all of that stuff. You know, the idea is that the convalescent beds are for people that just need some assistance, you know, getting, you know, getting over the disease, and they can't go home. So, so it's, you know, it's, it's a, it's a significant change for the Chestertown Hospital. They have been working very diligently to, you know, to come up with a plan and look at, and they've been working with all the emergency managers and health officers. What's the best way that that can happen? And, and this is the current plan. Could it change? You know, absolutely. This is, you know, it seems that the change happens very frequently on any number of, of topics related to this. It's, this is, this is the plan as it stands today, and, you know, what it may be in the future, I don't know.
I guess the point I'm trying to make is, and, and is, I'm probably never going to miss an opportunity to say it's, I'm so sorry that the pandemic is what made us realize it, but we're all realizing the importance of having our local hospital. Just like the hospital in Laurel was one of the first ones they closed up, and now it's, they've had to go back and open it up because of this. So, I think it just emphasized So, I think it just emphasizes the importance of our local hospital, and I'd be remiss if I didn't bring that up every chance I get, I think.
Commissioner, the good part about that call we had last week with them was that not only did they find the space for those numbers, but they've got the equipment, they've got the PPE, and they've got the employees.
That's all you can add?
They've got a plan to implement it when a certain level of patients are in the building, then at this point, then unimplement it. And as they told us last week, in all their locations, the census is very low at this point, where I had, the middle last week it was, very low in locations, so that's good.
I think that's great news.
I think we'll move on here to Wayne, Bill's report, and then Wayne gets down. Well, I'll ask if there's anyone listening.
I'll be brief, because Bill does such a great job of updating everybody, but as he indicated, it's day 55, and this EOC team has just been incredible with Bill's leadership and Charlene Perry, I can't say enough about her, and I don't want to start naming names because we'll miss a lot of them, and there's a lot involved. But the commitment and enthusiasm of this team, and it's gotten pretty big, is incredible, and doing really good work. So, it's not Wayne, it's got me worried sometimes as we go through each day, but it's not happening, it's keeping up, and they're all doing a great job. So, as far as EMS staffing last week, based on talks with Bill, we upgraded our EMS staffing last week with more EMTs and paramedics, augmented their hours. We saw the surge, we were worried about multiple patients at any one time, so we are now staffing three ambulances, one in Rock Hall, one in Melina, and one in Lynch, 24 hours a day. We're going to keep that up for the next probably five or six days, and then reevaluate with the information from Bill, along with the rescue squad, who is giving as much staffing as we can there. So, we're taking care of that. And the idea that at any one point, there could be multiple patients coming in, so we've done that. Tomorrow, starting tomorrow, with having that statewide poultry industry task force call starting tomorrow, that should be interesting, I'm looking forward to that and getting information. And I think ours is separate from Bill's, ours is the emergency management perspective, and what needs to be done outside of health for that community. There might be some other needs that we need to be looking into, and we'll get that perspective. As far as the Emergency Operations Center, Jamie Williams continues to do a really good job giving us updates every morning, with a particular now is the payroll protection plan has started up again yesterday, so she's providing that background for everybody, and she also does it on the Friday afternoon calls at 5:00 every day with the Chamber of Commerce. Rosie Grineau is still updating us every day on the volunteer activities, which are incredible to see in a county, and the feeding plan, and that's along with social services. The schools update us every day on the meals that they're providing, and that's gotten up to, I meant to write it down this morning, but I think a thousandth every day that they're providing, and even more on Fridays to get people through the weekend. Midshore Behavioral Health gives an update on reports on the services available and what they're seeing every day in the community for the mid-shore. And then, what Ginger does every day is try to find PPE, and we're particularly now looking for N95 masks and gowns, and I think we've located some gowns, we get a delivery of, we're going to pick up some tomorrow and kind of evaluate them. I think we'll be able to get a lot more in the county once we take a look at these and make sure they're up there. Part of the problem is vetting those suppliers and getting that done, so she's doing that. And then last concern that we hear, Bill and I hear, the EOC hears quite a bit, is people coming into the community, especially now that the weather's getting better, and how can we deal with that? And there's no easy answer. Sheriff Price always offers some input, and the police chiefs are worried about what happens, but we're continuing, and Bill continues to remind everybody that there's a 14-day quarantine. If you're coming and staying, there's still a 14-day quarantine, but you're coming to our community. But it's not an easy situation to deal with, especially the towns are having these situations, and they're concerned about it. And that's about all I have, I just really can't speak enough for the efforts that are going on, and I appreciate you for all the help that we're getting.
Great job, really, of course, Bill, you as well. I mean, you have a wealth of information when you come in here, you're on top of it, for sure.
Yeah, we certainly appreciate everything both that you are doing and your staff. I mean, I don't know how we can really, we certainly express our appreciation, but it's sort of like, that's not enough. And I hope you both realize and express to your staff that we certainly appreciate it, and I think the people in the county appreciate it.
Well, it's a team effort, and no one person could deal with this.
It's easy to kind of feel like it's not much going on when you think about the community and stuff, and then when you hear about some of the outbreaks and stuff, you realize just how serious the problem is, and how that could spread very easily.
And the stresses that are being put on the people who are responding.
Oh, that's enormous.
You used to be able to respond to an EMS call in just your uniform and put a mask or some gloves on, and now you have to stop. About 75% of our calls, you have to stop and get full PPE on, and it makes it more difficult to treat people, it stresses each call, and it's doing the same thing in all these facilities where people are taking care of people, that you can't just do it normally anymore.
Right.
Is there anyone on the conference call that might have a question for Bill, or Mr. Webb, or Wayne Darrow? I guess you did such a great job, if there's any question.
If she has one number, she's welcome.
I've got one caller that I'm not sure who it is, but I muted them, but now I'm trying to unmute them.
Oh, okay.
Oh, they could, okay, thank you. All right, thank you.
I'm sorry.
So, that caller may not be relevant to this topic.
Oh, okay.
I would take the opportunity to remind everybody that if you do have questions, please call the Kent County Health Department hotline, 410-778-1315.